Okay, all right. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with theverdignness of the heart.
Okay, roll call, please. Roll call?
Chair Gary Cushing.
Here.
Vice Chair Jamie Labor. Commissioner Aaron Todd.
President.
Commissioner Cameron Carizales.
Here.
Commissioner Miguel Magallanes.
Okay, thank you. Oral communications, the opportunity for citizen presentation or comments not related to agenda items, but within the responsibility of the Fillmore Planning Commission, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Do we have any, none? Okay. Brings us up to 5A, the consent calendar, minutes of the April 17th regular planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing, none. Business items, 7A, training session Heritage Valley Park specific plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Last month, we reviewed the general plan land use element, and I explained about goals and policies of the general plan. The general plan was adopted in 2003, it's been amended a couple of times since 2003. The general plan started in 1995, the general plan update, and that's when it was concluded in 2003. So, and I'll refer to that throughout the, tonight. In the general plan, it identifies a particular area called the southeast specific plan as a land use, and says the city needs to do something about that particular area. And it's this area right here, it's right behind the Mobile Home Park, Eldorado Mobile Home Park, south of Highway 126, east of Central Avenue, right along the Santa Clara River. And this is the aerial map from 1995, and this was, this was in front of the city council in 1995. And in 1995, the general plan at that time just identified the area as R1. And this, in 1995, there was development pressure to build in that area, and there's a multitude of property lines in that area. And it's about 300 acres, and the development pressure wanted to build on each separate parcel, all on their own, separate from each other. And the city council just experienced this on the west side of Fillmore, and they didn't like how it came out, and everyone independently, on their own, building, and this was before them. And they're concerned that the general plan didn't really address this too much. So in 1995, they launched the general plan, and well, ultimately, the project looked like, looks like this, is what it looks like today. It's comprehensively planned, we took the entire 300 acres regardless of parcels and who owns what, and we developed it in comprehensively. We created a specific plan on this area, but it was all guided by the general plan. The general plan stated that we're supposed to be fostering a thriving small town atmosphere in which civic pride, personal well-being, and a balanced economy are nurtured and protected. And we came with that. We had to deal with 300 acres and figure out how do we get to that vision statement? Well, the general plan create, had goals, and I'm gonna run right through this, and you know what, this is pretty boring, so I would like for you to interject or interrupt me anytime you want, right? I'm not a teacher or professor, and I don't plan to talk like this, so just jump in, okay? So we're supposed to maintain rural character, we're supposed to have unique physical and social character, whatever that means, it means architectural integrity. We're supposed to ensure that our land uses are consistent with the desires of the community. We're supposed to allow mixed-use development, encourage infill, we're supposed to have traditional style and character that's representative of city, of the older areas of Fillmore. You know, it's not supposed to be looking new and modern according to our general plan. We're supposed to have quality and orderly development. We're supposed to prohibit urban expansion within the unmitigatable floodway of the Santa Clara River and Sesame Creek, not just means don't build in the river. And we're supposed to encourage neighborhood schools, so that's, that's a little bit different neighborhood school, and that really means, put the school right in the middle of a subdivision so kids can walk to school. You don't always have to drive kids to school, right? Remember, this is 1995, and yes, we drove kids to school at that time, too, but the city council wanted to make sure kids can walk to school. By the way, everything I'm presenting tonight, this does not come from Kevin McSweeney, just to let you know, it came from city council members. All of this came from the city council members. I was present at the time, but the direction was crystal clear, the city council gave this direction. So in the general plan, talked about the scale, the policies, we're talking about, we had to worry about the scale and character of neighborhoods, we need to facilitate the upgrade of declining neighborhoods, we should provide high-end housing, right? That's pretty astronomical thing to say, because all we hear about is low income, affordable, 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 right? That drone, that beat, I mean, we hear that all the time, but in 1995, we're saying, hey, we're looking, we looked at Fillmore, we need to provide high-end housing, right? And that's came from the city council. And if you look at the, the Bridges subdivision, also known as Heritage Valley Park specific plan, it's high-end housing. That was intentional. And then the policy was, we're supposed to have distinctive architectural design and distinctive site planning, we're supposed to incorporate streetscapes and other urban design amenities, and think, just think about what's, what's down in the Bridges subdivision. Allow infill on, and reuse undeveloped property, traditional style, historic in appearance, more infill development, number LU5, number six doesn't have anything to do with, with the residential, but we are to avoid box-like commercial development. LU7, encourage neighborhood designs whose appearance is not dominated by the automobile, where front porches, homes, front parks, and parkways are encouraged, and garage-dominated streets are discouraged, right? Think about the Bridges subdivision. We probably should, we are adhering to that. LU8, require that non-residential development be designed to orient toward pedestrian sidewalks, again, that's not really residential. Then, oh, I removed the title of this, this is the implementation of the general plan, right? We allow 750 homes, create a new school on 10 acres, have a community park of 20 acres, have pedestrian facilities, bicycle trails, extend what's called the Santa Paula Branch Line Trail, have neighborhoods serving commercial, and then the areas needs to be flood-protected, specifically levees. The development should be designed to maintain views and vistas and protect the natural habitat. Pole Creek should be buffered from development and shall be consistent with the requirements of the appropriate state and federal agencies. Require the use of agricultural design themes that complement and do not dominate the setting. Use building materials, colors, and forms that contribute to a neighborhood character. Clustering of development should be promoted so that we protect sensitive habitat, that's another fancy word for the river. Require geotechnical studies to determine the potential for high groundwater and unstable soil, so the groundwater there is only six inches, right? And we did, we did do those geotechnical studies, and the soils liquefaction, that affected the design of the houses, so the, their floating foundations, we imported the soil, compacted, so you, we can't get away from high water, you've got high water down there. Require a circulation system that ties into the existing circulation system of Fillmore. Require new lighting, that's part of any proposed development, to be oriented away from sensitive areas, you'll see, that's why we don't have lights in the park, the river's sensitive. Require access to the existing mobile home. And then in the specific plan, we have this one little paragraph, I mean, in the general plan, and this is, we were writing this in this area, with the exception of the fish hatchery, remains in agricultural production. Some of this land is currently constrained by the location in the 100-year floodplain of the Santa Clara River. Under the revised land use element, development of this area, generally bound by Highway 126 to the north, and existing development to the, in the city, to the west, the Santa Clara River to the south, and the curb line to the east, will be guided by a specific plan or plans. The specific plan area would include about 67 acres currently in the city and 172 acres outside the city, but within the sphere of influence. The specific plan area would include an additional 62 acres south of the existing sphere along the Santa Clara River. In all, the specific plan's 301 acres. That's all the general plan gave us, but it gave us all those goals I just read to you, goals and policies and implementations. So from that, yes, please, please.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, not a problem, please interrupt.
So out of that 301 acres, what has the city lost to the state of California that has planted, or if I misquoted, that has planted all of the eco-friendly plants in that, around the fish hatchery?
None of it.
None?
None.
Okay.
The city has not lost it, so let's look at that, that picture, and you're describing this area here, the Los Inaga Habitat, so this, this was an orchard right here, an active, productive land, and in production, agricultural production. The state came in and bought it, and they're doing their re-vegetation for natural habitat. It'll never be agricultural production ever again. It'll never, ever be developed. But, it was, it was not part of the plan. It was not part of the city's plan, it's outside our sphere of influence, it's, it's outside our curb boundary, so it wasn't in our boundary or in anticipation to develop.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So everything I just read to you, we created a specific plan, this big, thick document, I'm not gonna read all of that to you, but it resulted, it's, in a, in that specific plan, in a specific plan, you have a land use element, it's comprehensive, the specific plan has a circulation pattern, and all infrastructure is planned in there. It has a financial package, or explanation, or impact of how we pay for all of this, the development pays for itself, this does, is not paid by the city, it's paid through development impact fees, and the development and landscape, and assessment districts is maintained by the people who live there, your assessment's probably high, you have to pay for some of the maintenance there. That's what a specific plan is, and everything I read leads to this particular one sheet of paper, the land use element. So if you'll notice, this talk about the circulation pattern, I, the general plan stated that circulation has to be integrated into the city, and so what the city did was extend Mountain View into the project, extend Central Avenue into the project, extend River Street into the project, and then extend Heritage Valley Parkway into the projects. These are extending existing street systems into the development. It's not intended to create a separation from the rest of the city. It is separated caused by Highway 126, that's the only separation we have. And then you'll see all the sensitivity of building along the river. We pulled development out of the river and put a park there, and then a street, and then development. So every time you're driving up and down Heritage Valley Parkway, you'll get to enjoy the benefits of the river. You'll notice the elementary school dead center in the project, it's walkable, and this Pole Creek basin they show here is, this is cartooned or illustrated half the size, the existing Pole Creek is twice the size of what's it showing. This is the trail system of, of the Bridges subdivision, so please note along Mountain View, it's, Mountain View has 10-foot wide sidewalks, that's because that's a bike path. Central Avenue has a, also a 10-foot wide bike path in this area here, and Tresal Way has 10-foot wide bike paths on each side, and then Pole Creek is a bike path, it's not open yet, hopefully in about six months or less, that'll be open to the public. And then the, the whole length of the Santa Clara River levee, the top of it, is a bike path. The developer intends to start construction in about two weeks of one-mile length of this section of the bike path right here, known as Phase Two. And then, to have all the traditional items that was discussed in the specific plan, you'll see these design concepts. This is the Green Bridge, which used to go over the Santa Clara River, and we took those bridges and moved them here. This picture illustrates Tresal Way, so this was drawn in 1995, or year 2000, and then the Heritage Valley specific plan was approved ultimately in 2002. And the city council at that time was directing that Tresal Way should look like this. And this is the, the trail system. And then what did the specific plan say? I, I read to you all that text of the general plan, and it really comes down to these items in section 5.3, the residential criteria. The general plan, the specific plan has pages and pages of implementation and requirements and all kinds of stuff, I, I don't wanna go all over that, just wanna go over these bullet points with you. So it is, the first bullet point, emphasis of the street as the principal design element. De-emphasize the visual impact of the garage, giving attention to composition of building mass, incorporating single-story elements into two-story structures, buildings, varying setbacks at porches, living and garage areas, variety of architectural styles, including but not limited to Craftsman, Traditional Italian, English Tudor, Country European, Farmhouse, and Monterey. So we have a house like this, based on what I just read to you, and based on the general plan, that's very, very traditional. So for instance, in, in, no, that's not a good example, in Thousand Oaks, you probably aren't gonna see a subdivision like this. In Santa Clarita, you're probably not gonna look, see a house like this. Well, the, all 750 homes, we have all different kinds of styles and colors, and every house has a porch. We have, this is the tradition, this is our Craftsman style, right? And then this is the Spanish style with a courtyard in the front. The reason I'm explaining all of this is because the Bridges is intentionally different, that subdivision, it feels different, it has a different atmosphere and climate, if you drive there today in the middle of the afternoon, you'll see people walking, families walking, especially on the weekends on the bike path. And it is that way, because we were, the city council directed us through the general plan, and the specific plan, through its text, required it. Again, I didn't create this stuff, it was directed by city council, and then you reviewed it, planning commissioners reviewed it, and you were part of steering committees and subcommittees and all that stuff. And it took a great amount of time, from 1995 to 2002, for the specific plan, and the general plan went from 1995 to 2003. It took lots of studies. At one time, the specific plan area was gonna be a lake project, because the groundwater was only six inches, just dig down, scrape down, get to the water, let it rise to the top, and it's gonna create a lake project. A lot of environmental problems with that, so then we were gonna put a golf course down there. The golf course was gonna go in the bottom of the river and go to the other side of the bank, it was an 18-hole golf course, I mean, you can see the environmental issues there, right? But we tried it, and we pushed, and we probably said it three or four years. It was gonna, a professional golf course designer, a nationally renowned golf course designer, designed it, and we ignored all the environmental concerns. I mean, we, we were trying to push something extravagant, but you know, that's wasn't reality, and then we got to what we see today, reality. Anyway, so I just wanna let you know, I want you to walk away with, we always start with the general plan, and I know it's a little flimsy little document, but it says a lot, to implement it, it took a lot of text. And you're no longer going to see decisions on your side or the city council, those have all been made, now the last one, it was 2019, all the projects, so what you see out there has already been approved, it's just in plan check, it, it's pretty routine, it takes a lot of our time, but it's routine, and you don't see it. That concludes my presentation, I won't bore you anymore, but I'll take any questions that you might have.
You have any questions? Do you have a question?
I have a few, but if somebody else has some, go for it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, not boring, thank you for, for that. A couple of questions. During the presentation, a slide showed something about connecting with the Santa Paula Trail. Don't see anything currently about that, is it safe to assume that we're talking about the rail in that, or is there like a bike trail they're talking about, or a walking path between here and Santa Paula that?
Oh, there is a document called the Santa Paula Branch Trail that goes from Ventura all the way to Piru, and it follows the railroad tracks, and it was, got adopted about 30 years ago. And it's up to each city to implement it within your own city. So Santa Paula's done a small segment, Piru has done a very small segment, Fillmore's done the most. So if you go along Old Telegraph Road, you'll see we have a bike path there, and you'll see at, along City Hall, along the railroad tracks, that promenade, that's the Santa Paula Branch Line Trail. It will connect to Pole Creek, and it'll come down Pole Creek, in order to cross Highway 126, we gotta go underneath Pole Creek, which has already been constructed, and it will follow Pole Creek and then the Santa Clara River, and then they will ultimately connect to the railroad tracks, and it'll lead ultimately to Piru. It's probably a 100-year plan. When will this ever get developed? But you have to create these legal document, and everyone needs to know we have this particular plan, and this is the, this is our section that we've been doing. Ventura County Transportation Commission's in charge of that plan, and each year, they ask the staffs from each of those agencies that I just mentioned, Ventura, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and the county, hey, how far along are you, should we pursue grants? So behind the scenes, a lot of cities are pursuing grants, and you, you know, they don't, they haven't received them, some of them have, but anyway, that's the long answer.
Okay, no, perfect. Thank you, that's the first part of it. The second question is regarding the, the parks and no lighting around the park because the river's sensitive. With technology moving the way it has, and fluorescent turning to LED, has the city or state or county even studied the, the impact or environmental impact on that to see if something could be done in regards to that?
We have, especially when it comes from the police department, right? The police department says, hey, you're putting a parking lot out there, and lights are, it's a safety issue, so we would bring up LEDs and all this other kind of stuff, and we would shield it and go down, but we would always lose whenever we would talk with the state, 'cause there's an endangered species down there called Least Bells Vario that has a nest, it's an endanger, it's a federally endangered species, and it's protected, so we're not allowed to interfere with the nesting of that bird, so we lose every time when it comes to lighting.
What, what kind of a bird is it?
It's about this big, and it flies about two to three feet above the ground, and there's another non-native bird that destroys that bird, so we've been destroying the non-native bird for years, and we're, we're promoting it, we're required by federal law to do that, and in the specific, in the EIR for this project, the developers are required to do that. So that particular bird's called a Least Bells Vario, is protected, and we had to do all kinds of plant material, all kinds of stuff, and the bird, and the bird nesting area is expanding because of it.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all that I have for now, thank you.
I don't think you want any more questions.
No, I'm happy to take any questions.
No, it's funny, just like, a little bird, okay, well, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, there are three endangered, three endangered species there, so that's another reason why it's, this area is designed the way it is, because we had to avoid those species.
So if I understood your comment correctly, just sorry for clarification, so the bird is endangered, there's another bird that's targeting the endangered bird, but?
A non-native bird, the brown bird.
Okay. I got questions, but I'll ask you about that later.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, you know, biologically, there's fascinating stuff, but you know, it's academic, it seems academic until it, until it's plotted on the project, and you have to stay, let's say, 300 feet away from it. So you wonder why there's a bend somewhere, or why there's no house, or why there's a park, or whatever, and it's, it's from that either plant, or bird, or horn-toed lizard, whatever it was, I forgot the name of that one, but anyway, that's why it's designed that way.
Okay, and then, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna quickly say, I assume these issues came up as part of?
Oh my god, they're all in the EIR.
Environmental review process.
Oh my goodness, yeah.
That's sort of how these issues get.
Yeah, I mean, the EIR process took maybe five years, you know, it's about this thick.
Okay, and then, last question, hopefully, the railroad part of it, where it, obviously the washout occurred out on Telegraph. Is there any talk, 'cause I think in Santa Paula, there's a rent-a, I don't know what those things are, railway cars?
Rail bikes.
You know, people can ride them and rent them, and is there, is there anything that the city's been asked to look at, as far as maybe from a city standpoint, doing something similar so people could come in? And, and the reason I bring that up is, it's really cool to do, but obviously not come into, you know, into, into the city limits, but how Santa Paula has it done is they're out towards the country, and instead of having rail cars out there where they're just getting tagged, or feedied, or eyesores, maybe do something to where everyone is happy with, you know, maybe tourists coming in. to where everyone is happy with, you know, maybe tourists coming in and using those. Is that, is that ever been talked about being integrated into like the general plan?
No, that is not in the general plan, and that's not in the specific plan to have pedal cars along the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Nor have we been presented that offer.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Now, so the railroad, that's run by the railroad though, right? It's run by pedal cars?
The railroad is owned and operated by Ventura County Transportation Commission, and it's leased out to an operator.
Right.
So an operator has that lease.
Okay. Okay, Kevin, do you want to go ahead and Plan and Commission Development Director updates right now?
Um, well, I just mentioned this, sorry.
We had no public speaker comments for that item, right? Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything to report to you. I mentioned in this training session that in about a week or two weeks, this particular project will start its construction of the bike path. It'll be about a mile in length. So if you're a homeowner down there and you're listening to this, you don't even have to be a homeowner in this particular neighborhood. Those bike paths is meant for everybody in Fillmore. That's really important. If you read the specific plan, the specific plan's not only for that neighborhood. So in this development, it's meant for everybody in Fillmore. The parks, the bike paths, the street system, everything. So you ask, what, do I have anything to report? We'll have a one-mile bike path under construction.
Okay, great. Okay, that brings us down to Commissioners. Cameron?
No.
No? Okay, that's it. We'll adjourn to the June 19th, 2024, at 6:30 City Hall Chambers.